The session is now called to order. Everybody is requested to rise for the singing of the national anthem. Please remain standing for the invocation to be led by our Congresswoman from the lone district of Davao Occidental, the Honorable Lorna Bautista Bandigan.
Let us put ourselves in the presence of God, our most gracious heavenly Father. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to be in the Philippine House of Representatives to serve our people through the passages of laws that will serve the nation's best interest and change our country for the better. Oh Lord, we humbly ask that you bless each one of us with your wisdom so that we may understand and decide according to your will. We leave up to you, all the elected officials and every department of our government, to work in the harmony for effective and efficient implementation of services the Filipinos need. Instill in us the desire to do what is right, fair, and just to our fellow men who put their trust in us. Make us compassionate to those who have less in life. Make us your channels of grace and mercy so that the beauty of the character of our Lord Jesus Christ be seen in us now and always. Amen.
Amen. The Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
All roll of members, Honorable Representatives Abaya, Abayon, Abel Janosa, Abu, Abueg, Asarón, Akok, Acosta, Acosta Alba, Adiong, Advincula, Agarau, Agabau, Iglipay Biliar, Albano, Alcala, Alejano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Franz, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantaleón, Amante, Amatong, Andaya, Angara Castillo, Antonino, Antonio, Akinaw Saisai, Aragonés, Arbizon, Arcillas, Arenas, Atienza, Aumentado, Bagau, Bagatzing, Bagilat, Banal, Barbers, Balzaga, Batawil, Batocabe, Bautista Bandigan, Bellaro, Belmonte Belixano, Belmonte Ace Cristoper, Belmonte Ricardo, Benitez, Bernos, Bertis, Biazón, Biliones, Verón, Bolilia, Mondo, Bordado, Bravo Anthony, Bravo Maria Vida, Rosas, Bulot Pektang, Cagas, Kalalang, Calderón, Alex Tobiano, Caminero, Campos, Canama, Kari, Casila, Castelo, Castro Franz, Castro Fred, Katamco, Cortano, Celeste, Cerapica, Feriles, Chávez, Chipeco, Ko, Kowanko, Oldeantes, Cortés, Fortuna, Cosalan, Risalgo, Juah, Juarezma, Cueva, Dalipe, Datol, Daza, De Jesús, De Venesia, De Vera, De Pensor, Del Mar, De Losario, De Losamontalia, Dimapor Abdullah, Dimapor Muhammad, Duabit, Durano, Di, Elago, Enverga, Erise, Erigel, Rimita Bujain, Escudero, Espina, Espino, Estrelia, Eusebio, Ebardoni, Pariñas, Fernando, Pere Juliet, Pere Luis, Pariol, Correndo, Flores, Fortun, Fortuno, Fente Belia, Garbin, García Gwendolin, García Jose Enrique, García Albano, Garin, Óscar, Garin, Sharon, Gasataya, Gachalian, Jerón, Go Ana Cristina, Go Marc, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Alexandria, González Aurelio Dom, González Fernando, Boriseta, Gúnyas, Hernández, Herrera Di, Alosjos, Hopper, Alosjos, Javier, Ko, Conghun, Labad Labad, Laxson, Lagman, Lanete, Logan, Lasatin, Lechón, Lee, Limcaichong, Lobregat, López Benhar, López Carlo, López Luis, Manuel Luis, Loyola, Kapagalaroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Malapitan, Manalo, Mangawang, Mangadadato Sojarto, Mangadadato Zahid, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariño, Marquez, Martínez, Matugas, Meliana, Mending, Mendoza, Mercado, Mirasol, Montoro, Naba, Nieto, Noel, Nograles Jerico, Nograles Carlo, Nolasco, Nuñez Malañao, Nuwaminal, Ocampo, Oliveres, Ong Edwin, Ong Henry, Ortega Pablo, Ortega Beninola, Paciau, Paduano, Palma, Pancho, Panganiban, Panotes, Papandayan, Pichai, Pimentel, Pineda, Plaza, Primissias Agabas, Kimbo, Radaza, Ramiresato, Ramos, Relámpagos, Rebillia, Robapuno, Robes, Roquamora, Rodríguez Isidro, Rodríguez Maximo, Román, Romero, Romualdes, Romualdo, Roque, Saqdalan, Sagherbaría, Sahali, Salceda, Salimbango, Salo, Salon, Sanbar, San Copan, San Dobal, Santos Recto, Sarmiento, Cesar, Sarmiento Edgar Mary, Sabelliano, Semah, Xiau, Ilberio, Singzon, Suansing Estrelita, Suansing Horacio, Suárez, Si Alvarado, Tambuntin, Tan Angelina, Tan Milagrosa, Tan Sherni, Tejada, Tebes, Tianco, In, Tiño, Tolentino, Preñas, Tugna, Tupas, Ti, Umali, Unavia, Ungab, Uniko, Ui Juliet, Ui Rolando, Ui Bareta, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Bellarde, Velasco, Velasco Catera, Veloso, Bergara, Billa Fuerte, Billa Nueva, Billa Razazuárez, Billa Nueva, Billa Rica, Billa Rin, Biolago, Yap Arthur, Yap Melicio, Yap Victor, Yu, Samora María Carmen, Samora Ronaldo, Zarate, Subir.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 222 members responded to the call.
With 222 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we defer the approval of the Journal of the previous session.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up reference of business and direct the Secretary General to read titles and bills on first reading.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the bills and resolutions on first reading for referral to appropriate committees.
Reference of Business Bill on First Reading, House Bill 6924, Establishing the Philippine Defense University System, Representatives Alvarez, Pariñas, García, Alvarez, Semah, several others.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
Resolutions, House Resolution 1575, Direct the Committee on Human Rights to Investigate the Violent Expersal of Residents During a Devolution in Barangay Mabini, Representative Elago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1576, Direct the Committee on Human Rights to Investigate the Death Threats and Intimidating Messages Received by Student Leader, Representative Elago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1577, Direct the Committee on Human Rights to Investigate Illegal Arrests and Harassment of Youth Resident, Representative Elago.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1578, Calling for Investigation into the Operations and Transactions of Avion Business Process Outsourcing Corporation, Representative Pariñas.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communication Letter dated January 3, Absalverdol, Simele Jaldea, Executive Secretary.
To the Archives.
Subpoena Dusastekum, Pursuant to Section 150, Rule 23 of the Rules of the House, Transmitting the subpoena Dusastekum at Testificandum dated 6 November issued by Executive Clerk of Court III, Isabel Maria Providencia T. Solis. Pursuant to Section 151, Rule 23 of the Rules of the House, Transmitting the subpoena Dusastekum dated 5 December issued by Officer in Charge Maria Janina J. Hidalgo. Attestation Certification by the Records Custodian under the seal of his office that he is certified and has the custody of the foregoing documents. Committee Report, Report Number 570, House Bill Number 6938.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider Committee Report Number 5151 regarding House Bill 6908 and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 6908, An Act Strengthening the Security of Ten Europe Workers, Amending for the Purpose Presidential Decree Number 442 as amended, otherwise known as the Labor Code of the Philippines.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Period of sponsorship and debate is now open.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the honorable thing of the Chairman of the Committee on Labor and Employment for his sponsorship speech. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
The honorable thing is recognized for his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Nung Abril 2016, isa sa pinakamahalagang tinuran ng atin mahal na pangulo nung panahon ng kanyang kampanya ay ang pagbatiko sa walang katapusan pagempleo sa atin mga kababayan ng mga kompanya bilang kontraktual na manggagawa. Nagiging determinado siya na labanan at wakasan ang kontraktualisasyon. Marami ang nakaisa sa ganitong layunin sapagkat maliwanag na kinakailangan na ng pagbabago at kailangan matigil na ang pang-aabuso sa atin mga manggagawa. Napakarami na sa kanila ang nilalamon ng isang di makatarungan sistema. Sistema ang hindi ipinagkakaluub ang seguridad sa trabaho at mga benepisyon karapat-dapat nilang tinatanggap. Madam Speaker, as fate would have it, President Duterte won and together with it came his promise to give a final blow to this monster, the practice of so-called Endo. On August 2016, when the House Committee on Labor and Employment was constituted, we immediately worked towards resolving this injustice that our workers have faced for so long. This move was made to provide legislative support towards the realization of this important campaign promise of the President. Madam Speaker, dahil sa aming kagustuhan matugunan agad ang problema ng kontraktualisasyon, buong taon ng 2017 ay sinikat naming idaus ang sunod-sunod na mga public hearings at mga konsumpasyon upang makabalangkas ng isang makabuluhan, makatarungan, at napapanahungbatas na makakapagpabuti ng kalagayan ng atin mga manggagawa. Ngayon, sa pagbubukas ng bagong taon at pagbabalik ng Kongreso sa sesyon, taas noong isinusulong ng committee ng panggagawa at empleo, ang panukalang batas na siniyasa at pinagdebatihan ng mabuti ang House Bill Number 6908 under Committee Report 551 entitled "An Act Strengthening the Security of Tenure of Workers, Amending for the Purpose Presidential Decree Number 442 as amended, otherwise known as the Labor Code of the Philippines." This legislation expressly prohibits labor-only contracting and define its existence. It also introduces a new provision requiring all persons or entities doing business as job contractors to obtain a license from the Department of Labor and Employment. As additional protection to employees, it declares that violation of substantive or procedural due process is equivalent to illegal dismissal. Through this bill, the classification of employees has been clarified and simplified. The benefits of redivers, project, and seasonal employees have been made consistent with the principle that all workers must be treated alike. All their benefits were made to be at par with that of regular employees. As additional safeguard in preventing the currents of 555 and Endo, the proposed law first entitles an employee who has rendered at least one month of service to a termination pay of one-half month salary. Second, it provides administrative penalties of a fine and possible closure of business for those engaging in prohibited contract arrangement. Madam Speaker, para sa atin bayan at mga manggagawa, nasiyang kaagibat natin sa pagpapayaman ng atin bansa. Hinihiling naming lahat, sampu na mga membro ng Committee on Labor and Employment, na harinawa ay maging karapat-dapat ito sa inyong suporta at pagpapatibay. We earnestly seek your approval of this bill. Maraming salamat po.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Tom Bilyarino, Akbayan Party List, for his sponsorship speech. So move.
The Honorable Tomas Bilyarin from Party List Akbayan is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my dear colleagues, para ho sa isang manggagawang nagpapaaral ng kanyang mga anak, nagpapagamot ng kanyang mga mahal sa buhay, at nagsisikap na itaguyod ang kanyang pamilya araw-araw, wala manang mas nakakatakot pa kundi ang Endo. That we, as a people, have been able to coin the term "endo" or "end of contract" attests to the fact that many Filipino workers have been struggling with the exploitative practice of labor contractualization for a long time. Make no mistake, contractualization as a way to skirt our laws that protect the welfare of our workers is the worst form of labor injustice. Madam Speaker, in past Congresses, attempts were made in this August chamber to provide in law what our workers lack in life. However, much to our workers' frustration, such attempts have failed. But now, my dear colleagues, under the 17th Congress, we have the chance to make it right for our workers. Let me enumerate the salient points of this proposed law. First, the bill prohibits hiring workers for limited periods of time under the so-called "fixed-term employment contracts." This prohibition addresses one of the principal forms of contractualization, which is the hiring workers under 555 arrangements. Second, the bill changes the definition of prohibited arrangements known as "labor-only contracting." Sa ilalimho ng kasalakuyang panukala, ang contractor ay ituturing na labor-only at bawal kung ito ay walang sapat na kapital o kagamitan. Labor-only at bawal din ang contractor kung ito ay walang kontrol sa mga manggagawang mismong nagtatrabaho. At dagdag pa, labor-only at bawal din ang contractor kung ang gawain ito ay direktang kaugnay sa negosyo ng principal. In short, itong tatlong elemento ay dapat magkakasama dun sa pagdefine natin ng labor-only contracting at hindi one of the three arrangements. By providing that any one of these acts constitute prohibited labor-only contracting, our workers are finally protected against this malevolent but unfortunately widespread practice. Third, the measure imposes administrative penalties on employers who continue to violate the workers' right to security of tenure. This changes the present situation where employers exploit workers by hiring them under fixed-term contracts or under labor-only arrangements without fear of any liability at all. In view of these proposed measures, this bill is not only what our workers want but also what our workers need. At kung sakaling hindi mapasa kanila ang kailangan at karapat-dapat na mapasa kanila, hindi natin sila masisisi kung tuluyan na silang mawalan ng kumpiansa sa kongresong ito. Hindi natin sila masisisi kung tuluyan na silang mawalan ng pag-asa na may tutulong pa sa kanila. Clearly, the enduring system that makes the few rich and powerful is the same system that subjects many to unparalleled abuse and exploitation. As their duly-elected representatives, it is incumbent that we make the system fair. Gawin nating patas at sangalan ng pagiging patas, ano mang kakulangan sa buhay ay dapat punan sa batas. Maraming salamat po. Magandang hapon.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration on House Bill 6908. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
Is there any objection? The Chair here is none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve Journal Number 49 dated January 15, 2018. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Journal Number 49 is hereby approved.
Madam Speaker, move to suspend session.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed.
Madam Speaker, we would like to greet some guests in the gallery. In the gallery are the guests of the Honorable Deputy Speaker Reneo Abu. These are the Tulung Dunung Scholars of the Second District of Batangas, headed by Ms. Emerynley Gaspie, their coordinator of Congressman Abu Scholars.
Will the guests of the Deputy Speaker Reneo Abu please rise? Welcome to the House of Representatives. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider her Committee Report Number 509 regarding House Bill 6772, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 6772, An Act Ensuring the Preservation and Management of Protected Areas, Amending for the Purpose of Public Act Number 7586, Otherwise Known as the National Protected Area System Act of 1992.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Period for sponsorship and debate is now open.
Madam Speaker, I move that to recognize the Honorable Arnold T., the Honorable Chairman of the Committee of Natural Resources, for his sponsorship speech.
The Honorable Arnold T. is recognized for his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The Chairman and the members of the Committee on Natural Resources is ready to defend the bill. And also, Madam Speaker, we'd like to also recognize the major, one of the sponsors of the bill, Representative Ramirez Sato, to also be recognized to also answer questions regarding the said bill. Madam Speaker, also, we'd like to also request to acknowledge and recognize one of the author, Representative Ramirez Sato, to also be part, to defend the said bill.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Nene Sato for her sponsorship speech.
The Honorable Nene Sato is recognized for her sponsorship speech.
Thank you very much, Honorable Speaker, Honorable Arnold T., Chairperson of the Committee on Natural Resources, all the co-authors of this bill, my fellow advocates in environmental conservation, protection and rehabilitation, good afternoon. I am pleased to sponsor House Bill 6772, An Act Ensuring the Preservation and Management of Protected Areas, Amending for the Purpose Republic Act Number 7586, Otherwise Known as the National Integrated Protected Area System Act of 1992. This bill, expanding the National Integrated Protected Area System, or E-NI-PAS, is both timely and urgently needed. It is timely since we recently commemorated the International Human Rights Day last December 10, 2017. As the 1987 Philippine Constitution provides in Article 2, Section 16, "The state shall protect and advance the right of the people to a balanced and healthy ecology in accord with the rhythm and harmony of nature." This E-NI-PAS bill, first and foremost, aims to contribute and to uphold the right of every Filipino to a healthy and ecologically balanced environment. It is urgently needed because the Philippines is described as one of the biodiversity hotspots and belonging to one of the seventeen mega-diverse countries in the world. The Philippines is host to seventy to eighty percent of the world's life forms and is believed to harbor more diversity of life than any other country on earth on a per hectare basis. However, it is very unfortunate that our country is losing its biodiversity at unprecedented scale. The unmitigated and destructive human activities have put the country in a biodiversity crisis that would take decades to reverse. Article 12, Section 4 of the 1987 Constitution states that the Congress shall, as soon as possible, determine by law the specific limits of forestlands and national parks, marking clearly their boundaries on the ground. To this end, Republic Act Number 7586, otherwise known as the National Integrated Protected Area System of 1992, or the NI-PAS Act, was passed establishing a system of protected areas within the classification of national park as provided for in the Constitution. The system consists of all areas or islands in the Philippines proclaimed, designated, or set aside pursuant to a law, presidential decree, presidential proclamation, or executive order as a national park, game refuge, bird and wildlife sanctuary, wilderness area, strict nature reserve, watershed, mangrove reserve, fish sanctuary, natural and historical landmark, protected and managed landscape or seascape, as well as identified virgin forests before the effectivity of the NI-PAS Act. The NI-PAS Act also provides for the integration of additional areas into the system through a lengthy and careful inclusion procedure. This includes the conduct of suitability assessments, publication and public hearings, which then leads to the issuance of a presidential proclamation and culminates in the final declaration and classification of the land by Congress as a national park. Since 1992, the year the NI-PAS Act became law, one hundred thirteen have been declared through presidential proclamations as protected areas. Out of these one hundred thirteen proclaimed protected areas, only thirteen protected areas have finally proceeded to be legislated by Congress and as such, in more than twenty years since the NI-PAS Act was passed. It is highly imperative, therefore, that the proclaimed protected areas after the effectivity of the act are finally declared as such through congressional fiat as required by the NI-PAS Act and as mandated by the Constitution. Further, there are many proclaimed protected areas in the country categorized as initial components that are still unproclaimed under the NI-PAS law. These are also identified as key biodiversity areas in the country that is home to endemic and critically endangered species of flora and fauna. In this light, Mr. Speaker, House Bill 6772, or the E-NI-PAS Bill, will, number one, effectively strengthen the management of protected areas; two, rationalize and update the protected area management plans; three, clearly define the prohibited acts in all protected areas; four, ensure participation of the indigenous peoples in decision-making for areas under their ancestral domain; and it would institutionalize budgets for protected areas under the yearly general appropriations act. The following are the highlights of this bill, Madam Speaker. In terms of coverage, the expanded NI-PAS Bill will add ninety-four new protected areas that were previously declared national parks through presidential proclamation. These protected areas span fifteen regions across fifty-three provinces and discovers a total land area of three million ninety-six thousand eight hundred forty-six hectares, or approximately ten percent of our country's total land area. The Protected Area Management Board, or the PAMB, tasks to provide overall management and supervision of which protected area will be strengthened and will have an updated composition. In order to ensure efficient day-to-day operations, a Protected Area Management Office, or PAMO, for each of the protected areas headed by a protected area superintendent with a permanent plantilia position will be established and a full staff complement will also be appointed by the Department of Environment and Natural Resources. The Protected Area Management Plan that details the long-term framework for the management of each protected area and guide the preparation of its annual operation plans and budget will also be updated to ensure that climate change adaptation and mitigation, disaster risk reduction and management, waste severage and septic management, and gender and development shall form part the innovative management techniques to be adopted and implemented. And this will ensure that the Protected Area Management Plan is harmonized with the ancestral domain sustainable development and protection plan required under the IPRA law. This E-NI-PAS Bill will strengthen and uphold the indigenous people's right to self-determination. Ancestral domains, lands of customary rights shall be accorded due recognition. As part of heritage preservation and the need to conserve biologically significant areas, ancestral domains occupied and conserved for and by indigenous peoples and communities shall be recognized, respected, developed, and promoted in accordance with the indigenous people's knowledge systems, practices, and customary laws. The E-NI-PAS Bill will usher in a stricter policy regime for protected areas. Dito po sa expanded NI-PAS, sinisiguradin nating maingipin ang batas. This is by expanding and clearly defining new prohibited acts within the protected areas, including the banning of mining, even exploration activities, quarrying, bio-perspecting, fishing, poaching, and introducing GMOs and other invasive species of flora and fauna. Provisions imposing stricter fines and penalties for violators, including perpetual disqualification from any public office in case the violator is a government officer, personnel, and elected officials are also included. As in all other pieces of legislation, funding will be a key issue, especially in implementing conservation and protection activities. To this end, the E-NI-PAS ensures an effective, predictable, and reliable funding and financing mechanism for protected areas through the Integrated Protected Area Fund, a trust fund for each protected area derived from the income, fees, donations, and grants. This will also ensure annual appropriations from the General Appropriations Act under the Department of Environment and Natural Resources since most of the declared national parks have little or no budget allocation as they are not yet included in the NI-PAS. Upon enactment of this bill, all the ninety-four new protected areas will have annual appropriations in the GIA. Honorable Speaker, Your Honors, we all know how unique, beautiful, and diverse our country is. But we have also all heard of the unfortunate stories on the seemingly wanton acts that spoil and destroy our environment and biodiversity. These must be addressed and stopped urgently and immediately. We are therefore talking here of the patrimony of our nation, the legacy we have to pass on to our children and our children's children. In view of all this, Madam Speaker, the immediate passage of this bill is earnestly sought. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration on House Bill 6772. So move, Madam Speaker, Your Honor.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we take up unfinished business and consider Committee Report Number 431 regarding House Bill 6573, and direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
Any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 6573, An Act Prohibiting Hazing and Regulating Other Forms of Initiation Rights of Fraternities, Sororities, and Other Organizations, and Providing Penalties for Violation Their Oh. Repealing for the Purpose of Public Act Number 8049, entitled The Not Regulating Hazing and Other Forms of Initiation Rights of Fraternities, Sororities, and Other Organizations, and Providing Penalties Therefore.
Majority Leader. Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, our parliamentary status of the bill is that we are in the period of sponsorship and debate. I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Ray Umani.
The Honorable Reynaldo Umani, Chairman of the Committee on Justice, is recognized.
If Your Honor, Madam Chair, I am ready to answer any interpolation question that may be raised before the plenary, Your Honor.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, with no other, with no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is carried.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, with no committee or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objections?
Oh, Mrs. Speaker. Madam Speaker, objection?
Majority Leader.
Um, may I?
The pleasure of the Honorable Dasa.
I would like to request for a copy of the Committee Report so that I'll be given a chance to look over the provisions and decide whether I'd profound questions to interpolate to the esteemed Chairman of the Committee on Justice.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the copies of the Committee Report have been distributed weeks ago, even before months before, even before the break. That is why we took it up under unfinished business, Madam Speaker.
Your Honorable Dasa?
Yes, yes, I'm not disputing the statement of the Majority Leader, but everybody knows that during the recess, all the papers on the desk were removed. So may I request for deferment for a few minutes of consideration in this report because I see that it is a thick report. It's 56 pages, and I'd like to have time to go over the report. I therefore request for a deferment or a few minutes on the consideration of this bill.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, copies of the Committee Report were given before the break, months before the break. In fact, the sponsor has already given his sponsorship speech months ago, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Dasa.
Well, what's the pleasure of the Majority Leader? I'm only requesting for a deferment for some minutes on the consideration of this Committee Report, because, you know, I saw a copy of this on my desk before the adjournment, and then after adjournment, all the papers on my desk were removed.
Majority Leader.
To give way to our colleague, I move that we temporarily suspend consideration on House Bill 6573. So move, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill 286 under Committee Report Number 439, and direct the Secretary-General to read the title of the bill.
Any objections? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary-General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 286, a knock creating additional branch of the Regional Trial Court in the province of Mountain Province to be stationed in Municipality of Parasidis. Amending for the purpose Section 14, Paragraph A, Batas Pampasabilang 129, otherwise known as the Judis Jerry Reorganization Act of 1980, as amended, appropriating funds therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Ray Umani.
The Honorable Ray Umani is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that the explanatory note be the sponsorship speech of the Honorable Umani.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, with no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, with no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill Number 286. So move, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. Motion is approved. As many as are in favor of House Bill 286, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill 286 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill Numbers 4387, 5723, 5808, 6323, 6743, 6769, 6770, 6772, 6907, and House Resolution Numbers 1194 and 1521, as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, with leave of the House, I move that we consider bills under the calendar of business for Thursday and Friday. Madam, these are all local bills, Madam Speaker. Pursuant to our rules, allow me to put forth an obdibus motion for the consideration of the following: House Bill Number 6758, 6759, 6605, 1523, 165, 6780, 6781, 6782, 6795, 6796, 6797, 6798, 6799, 6800, 6801, 6820, 6915, 6917, 6918, 6919, 6920, 6921, 6927, 6928, 6929, 6930, and House Bill Number 6932. So move, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The omnibus motion for the approval of all the 27 bills is now approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate and consider the respective explanatory notes as the sponsorship of the said measures.
Any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, with no member who wishes to interpolate, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Any objection? Chair hears none. Period for sponsorship and debate is closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. Period of amendment is now opened.
Madam Speaker, with no committee nor individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading the following local House bills. House Bill 6758, 6759, 6605, 1523, 165, 6780, 6781, 6782, 6795, 6796, 6797, 6798, 6799, 6800, 6801, 6820, 6915, 6917, 6918, 6919, 6920, 6921, 6927, 6928, 6929, 6930, and 6932. So move, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. As many as are in favor of approving on second reading the aforementioned 27 bills, please say aye.
Aye.
As many as are opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The aforementioned 27 bills are now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 1521, and direct the Secretary-General to read the title of the resolution.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. The Secretary-General is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House Resolution 1521, the resolution expressing the support of the House of Representatives to the BID, to the bid of the Samahang Basketball ng Pilipinas to host the 2023 FIBA World Cup and then joining the government to extend its full assistance to SVP's efforts.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 1521. So move.
Any objection? Hearing none. House Resolution 1521 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we have 20 resolutions in our business for the day of similar characteristics. These are all resolutions congratulating medal winners in recent national competitions, Madam Speaker. Therefore, Madam Speaker, I move that we consider these resolutions and pursuant to our rules, allow me to put forth an obdibus motion for the consideration of the following House resolutions. House Resolution Number 1526, 1527, 1528, 1529, 1530, 1531, 1532, 1533, 1534, 1535, 1536, 1537, 1538, 1539, 1540, 1541, 1542, 1543, 1544, and 1545.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The omnibus motion is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt the following resolutions, the aforementioned resolutions.
Any objection? Hearing none. The aforementioned resolutions are hereby adopted.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider Committee Report Number 495 regarding House Resolution Number 646, and direct the Secretary-General to read the title of the resolution.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. The Secretary-General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Resolution 646, resolution direct appropriate House Committee to conduct a probe in aid of legislation into the persistent delays in the issuance of passports to Filipino applicants and the utilization of the passport revolving fund.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the adoption of the findings and recommendations contained in the Committee Report. So move, Madam Speaker, your honor.
Any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we resume consideration on House Bill 6573 on Committee Report Number 431, and direct the Secretary-General to read the title of the bill.
Any objection? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The Secretary-General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 6573, a knock prohibiting hazing and regulating other forms of initiation rites of fraternities, sororities, and other organizations, and providing penalties for violation thereof. Repealing for the purpose Public Act Number 8049 entitled the knock regulating hazing and other forms of initiation rites of fraternities, sororities, and other organizations, and providing penalties therefore.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Ray Umani.
The Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Justice, the Honorable Ray Umani is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I have conferred with the Honorable Dasa, and we have discussed the matter, and this representation has no objection to the request of the Honorable Dasa, and we agree to delete Section B of, or Section B, Paragraph B of Section 12, to be deleted to Committee Report Number 431, and to remove any obstacle for the approval of this particular Committee Report, Madam Presiding Officer.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, we have no objection to the amendments, Madam Speaker. With that, Madam Speaker, with no more committee or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Any objection? Hearing none. The period of amendments is now closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading on House Bill 6573. So move.
Any objection? Hearing none. Motion is approved. As many as are in favor of House Bill 6573, as amended, say aye.
Aye.
As many as are opposed, say nay. The ayes unanimously have it. House Bill 6573, as amended, is now approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of unfinished business, I move that we take up, that we consider House Concurrent Resolution Number 9, and direct the Secretary-General to read the title of the bill.
Any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary-General is directed to read the title of the House Concurrent Resolution.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 9, Concurrent Resolution to constitute the Congress of the Philippines as a constituent assembly for the purpose of proposing amendments to or revision of the 1987 Constitution.
Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is that we are in the period of interpolation. With that, Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Constitutional Amendments, the Honorable Roger Mercado. So move, Madam Speaker, your honor.
The Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Constitutional Amendments, the Honorable Roger Mercado is recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Ariel Casilaw of Anak Pawis Partilis for his interpolation.
The Honorable Ariel Casilaw is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ilang araw na rin po na sunod-sunod sa headlines ng media, ang usapin ng pagbabago ng ating konstitusyon. Marami po ang mga tanong ng ating mga kababayan. Una, papaano baguhin ang 1987 konstitusyon? Pangalawa, ano ang laman ng posibilidad ng mga provision na aamendahan sa bawat artikulo ng kasalukuyang konstitusyon? At pangatlo, ano ang kinabukasan nito? Madam Speaker, I have here the Committee Report 110, House Concurrent Resolution Number 9, convening Congress as a constituent assembly. In my political science days, Madam Speaker, may kakunti tayong kaalaman kung ano ang pinapahintulutan ng ating konstitusyon sa pamamaraan ng pagbabago nito, pagamenda, pagribisa, o sadyang pagbuo ng bagong konstitusyon. Totoo sa kasalukuyang konstitusyon, tatlong pamamaraan ang sinasabi ng ating saligang batas. By constituent assembly, kung saan lahat tayong mga mambabatas sa dalawang kapulungan ay pupulungin at tayo mismo, ang bibigyan ng obligasyon at karapatan bilang halal ng bayan para pag-aralan ang bawat linya, ang bawat titik, at bawat mensahe ng bawat seksyon, artikulo ng ating konstitusyon. Pangalawang pamamaraan ay ang pagbuo ng isang komisyon, constitutional convention. At ito ang ginawang daan at inilual ang 1987 konstitusyon na kung saan pinag-aralan ng ibat-ibang mga sektor na hinalal. Pinaggugulan ng panahon, rekurso, at lumabas nga ang 1987 konstitusyon. At ang pangatlong pamamaraan, itong sinasabing people's initiative. Madam Speaker, malinaw po sa House Concurrent Resolution Number 9 na ito ay Committee Report sa halos dalawang putwalo na ibat-ibang mga resolusyon, panukala ng ating mga kasamahang mambabatas para sa tunguhing, baguhin, o amyandahan ang ating konstitusyon. Ang unang-unang katanungan ko po, sa aking pagbasa, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, marami din naman dito ang nanawagan mula sa ating mga kasamahan na ang daang tatahakin para amyandahan, baguhin ang ating konstitusyon ay sa pamamaraang constitutional convention. Now, may I know, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, how did it? Papaano po nagkaroon ng kaisahan na magiging pangunahin ang pagbuo ng constituent assembly bagkus sa kahalagahan at importansya na hindi ang mga mambabatas ang aamenda kundi itong tinatawag na constitutional convention? Bakit hindi natin gawin ang ginawa tulad ng inilual ng 1987 konstitusyon? May I know the very reason, Madam Speaker? May I know the very reason, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, among other proposals like the Constitutional Convention, bakit po mas pangunahin na itinulak ang constituent assembly?
Thank you very much, Honorable Casilaw. The parliamentary procedure of our Congress has been adopted, and our committee followed the procedure. When bills are referred to our Committee on Constitutional Amendments or resolutions for that matter, it will be subjected to a thorough discussion by the members with the participation of the experts regarding the matter that is being discussed, like former Constitutional Convention delegates, justices of the Supreme Courts, political scientists from renowned universities. And after that, the committee will vote on what is presented. In this case, we were presented with the resolution calling for the amendment of our constitution through the Congress upon a vote of three-fourths of all its members. So it is very clear that it will be through the constituent assembly. And the voting resulted in favor of convening both Houses of Congress into a constituent assembly. Hence, we have this now for our approval in front of our members of the House of Representatives, the concurrent resolution to constitute the Congress of the Philippines as a constituent assembly for the purpose of proposing amendments to or revision of the 1987 constitution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sponsor. If I may quote, and I believe one of the strongest points in pushing for the convening of Congress as a constituent assembly as manifested in this resolution, second to the last paragraph, whereas a constituent assembly is the preferred mode of introducing amendments to the constitution since it is deemed the most expeditious, open, and least costly among the options contemplated. Now, I may not get the very clear, exact, and precise statistics. May I know, Mr. Sponsor, how much of the costing, comparative costing of convening a constituent assembly vis-à-vis the Constitutional Convention? What is the disparity of probable government resources to be spent in the both modes that we are probably selecting or debating?
I appreciate the very important question from our colleague. The summary estimate of budgetary requirements as of 10 January 2018, if we hold the Constitutional Convention, it will cost a total of 11 billion. Whereas if we constitute our Houses into a constituent assembly, we will only spend 204 million. 204 million vis-à-vis the 11 billion if we will constitute a constitutional convention.
There was one time in a committee meeting that I attended with this deliberation, Mr. Sponsor, that the card, that at that time, the statistics presented was 8 billion versus 2 billion. Although there's a very major difference from what the numerical statistics that you are presenting now, that if see a, the con us, this Congress will deliberate to amend the constitution, we will just be spending 204 million, am I correct?
Yes, Your Honor.
Compared to the 11 billion if to convene a constitutional convention? Now, Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, while not mainly debating on the saving that we could have via constituent assembly, but is it not fair also that Congress in previous years and even for the 2018 approved, allocated billions of pesos that are in my personal term, in the parlance of my political organization as anti-people and useless, that government resources, taxpayers' money were allocated, for example, the 30 billion in paying big business under the Risk Management Fund in favor of foreignly, foreign-owned corporation? Is it not a waste of money compared to 8 billion or even 11 billion? That the one, the framers, people who will be tasked to study, amend, or to draft a new constitution are not coming from Congress, but are independent, but has the capacity, the integrity, and the capability to present a more favorable, balanced new constitution? That I cannot understand, Mr. Sponsor, that Congress has been in a yearly appropriation deliberation, there are billions of pesos wasted for allocations, not for public interest, but mainly favoring certain sectors of our society. But here, we give weight, heavy weight on the savings that could, the government could save by virtue of selecting the mode of changing the constitution via constituent assembly. Now, saving, Mr. Sponsor, Madam Speaker, vis-à-vis doing an act, especially a very important act in amending our constitution, is it not right? While we spend more on a mode, for example, constitutional convention, but the result and the output would be accurately reflecting the interest of the majority of our Filipino people?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, my colleague. We are only talking about the members of the present 17th Congress, where we believe that the members has the capacity, the experience, and the desire to express their service to the people by providing them with perhaps the best constitution so far that we can imagine. And the expense is only a minor matter. For me, it is the members who are patriotic, who is willing to sacrifice, who is willing to give way in order that we can have a new constitution. And this is now our chance. The mode is perfect. The capacity, the memberships, look, the members now. We are all willing to go hand-in-hand and provide the necessary changes if there are, there are changes. After we deliberate intelligently, we give time, effort, and produce good amendments if there are amendments to be made, and submit our people for their approval.
Thank you, Mr. Sponsor. Now, may I know the timeframe? Because in the concurrent House Resolution Number 9 stated in its, the most expeditious, as the Chairman of the Committee for Constitutional Amendment, that there has been a deliberation, definitely. If this resolution will be approved and we convene Congress to act as a constituent assembly, what timeline or what timeframe can we expect that Congress will deliberate, amend, ratify, or create a new constitution? How long will it take in accordance to your computation, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The, this representation, as the Chairman of the Committee on Constitutional Amendments, would say that we will take this important matter one step at a time. Therefore, we will have to approve first the mode of amending our constitution. And then, submit to the Senate of the Republic of the Philippines for their concurrence. And after their concurrence, we can now set the date when we can start our work and provide for the different things that needs to be done in order to complete our work. And we will work with, with speed and caution in such a way that we will not be blamed for any hasty decisions. It will be open, transparent, honest, and everybody is even welcome to provide the necessary suggestions or provisions that would buttress and make our constitution more applicable in order that the goal, which is to make our country self-reliant, competitive, and progressive, can be achieved.
Madam Speaker, hindi ko po narinig sa ating kagalang-galang na sponsor ang eksaktong sagot nanininanais marinig ng taong bayan. Ang tanong po, ano iyong binabalak na timeline? I understand that in the event that the concurrent House Resolution Number 9 will be adopted by this House, and the same resolution in Senate will be adopted, immediately, ilang araw po yun makukunbin ang ating kongreso para maging isang ganap na constituent assembly? At ganoon, kapag nakunbin na po yan, ilang araw ba ang kakainin? I understand, Madam Speaker, na meron na pong nailatag dahil hindi namang po tayo mag-uusap dito ng concurrent resolution convening Congress as a constituent assembly kung wala pang natatarget na timeline. Dahil, Madam Speaker, I am very confused, Mr. Sponsor. Marami pong lumalabas na balita na nagmumula mismo sa liderato ng ating kongreso nanais na magkaroon na ng ratification or ng plebisito sa darating na Mayo 2018. Kung sa ganoon, at ito po ay nagmumula sa liderato ng ating kongreso na magkakaroon na ng bagong konstitusyon na isasalang o isasabay sa inaprubahan nating postponement ng barangay eleksyon at ang itinakda nating araw ay sa Mayo 2018. Aba, Madam Speaker, January po tayo ngayon, Enero, Febrero, Marso, Abril. At kapag sa target na Mayo 2018, apat na buwan lang, amat na buwan lang po ang ilalaan ng kongresong ito para talakayin ang isang napakaselang dokumento at napakaimportanteng dokumento. That is why, Madam Speaker, my confusion stemmed from that statement of our leadership, of House leadership. Dahil kung ganoon po ba, kaya po ba ng kongresong ito na talakayin ang bawat artikulo ng ating konstitusyon sa loob lamang ng apat na buwan? How can we say that in four months, sa loob ng apat na buwan, mula doon sa ating statement ng ating kagalang-galang na liderato ng kongreso, hindi po ba expeditious na sobra na yan? Sobrang pagmamadali po yan. Pangalawa, ano po ang maasahan nating mga seksyon na aamendahan natin? Kung tayo po ay nakatali sa loob ng apat na buwan, ibig sabihin po ba nun, Madam Speaker, meron na pong nakahanda na mga specific proposed amendments per provision, per line, per article of the konstitusyon? At yan po, kapag tayo ay nakunbin na bilang kongreso, ay automatiko na pong ihahapag at pagbutuhan ng mayorya na alam namang po natin sa loob ng kapulungan ito, meron talagang hawak ang supermajority koalisyon. At kung ano man ang nilalaman ng binabalak na amyenda na yan, kahit pa ito ay kontramamayan, wala tayong magagawa kundi sumunod sa direktiba ng nakarami sa mayorya, partikular ng liderato ng kongreso. That, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, I would like to be clarified. Dahil gusto ko pong manggaling sa'yo mismo bilang Chairman ng komiting nagtalakay ng mga, ng mga panukala, dalawang putwalong panukala, at nagugol ng panahon, I understand your sacrifice. The colleagues who participated in almost whole-day deliberation from creating subcommittees until present, and here in changing the mode, we have here the proposal of concurrent House Resolution Number 9. Pero nais ko pong maging makatutuhanan tayo. Tayo po ay halal ng bayan, nandyan po ang camera ng ating mga media. Kaya po ba, Mr. Sponsor, Madam Speaker, na ang lalamanin ng mga amyenda at ng ating posibleng bagong konstitusyon ay masasabay na sa darating na halalang pang barangay sa Mayo 2018?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Kung sana ipasana lang natin ito ngayon, anyway, hindi namang ito controversial just to convene both Houses into a constituent assembly at mapaki-usapan natin ang ating mga kasama dito na hindi na lang sila mag-interfilit, eh wala na sana, makasave tayo ng time, at siguro next week makakunbin na tayo. At don, siguradong makarami tayo ng produkto na magawa at madiscuss na natin 'yung mga proviso na pertinenti at importante para sa, for the good and information of our members.
Ang tinatanong ng kinatawang ito, Madam Speaker, Mr. Sponsor, that requires and needs a direct answer from the chairperson and the sponsor?
Yes, Madam Speaker, because our leaders have promised have promised our people to give them the right structure fitting to the Filipino character. At nakita natin sa ating presidente na gusto niyang mabigyan ng imidjet solusyon ang problema sa employment, problema sa kahirapan, problema sa droga, problema sa ating peace and order. Kaya, this is now the right moment na matulungan natin siya at sino sa atin dito, sa Kongreso, na hindi gustong makatulong sa ating mga kababayan. If there is anybody who wants to, uh, make results as fast and as soon as possible, there is nobody but the members of Congress who represents and brings the voice of our people in this halls of Congress. Kaya, when it comes to how we will complete and the timeline, kung matapos ito in one month, why not? Basta maganda lang pagkagawa. Kung matapos ito kasabay na sa barangay elections, sinong hindi papayag? Para matapos nito at makita natin ang, uh, mga kagandahan na, uh, makikita natin sa kabayan-bayanan ng ating bansang Pilipino.
Madam Speaker, the categorical answer of our distinguished colleague, while blatantly and clearly saying the soonest possible time, the better, while this representation begs to disagree, Madam Speaker, dahil napakadelikado po. Bagamatayot totoo, tayo po ay halal ng bayan. Pero 'yung kung sabihin natin,
Madam Speaker,
the soonest possible time...
With due respect to our colleague, ang masasabi ko lang is if there is a will, there is a way.
Yes, Madam Speaker, I fully agree. I fully agree that if there is a will, there is a way. Pero sana namang po, 'yung will to find a way, the soonest possible time ay hindi po masasakripisyo ang batayan at napakahalagang laman. Dahil kinikilala natin ang ating konstitusyon bilang pangunahing dokumento, bilang pinaka-importanteng dokumento. Ilulualdyan ang pang-araw-araw na mga batas. Hindi lamang sa usaping personal, hindi lamang sa usaping porma ng ating gobyerno, ng ating ekonomiya, kundi ang pangkabuoan na. Pero kapag ito po ay mamadaliin natin na ang mga proposed amendments naman ay hindi maisasalang sa isang transparent, deliberative, presenting various, not only expert opinions, cause and effect, tila hindi namang po kaaya-aya na mamadaliin natin ang isang napakahalagang dokumento para lamang makamit natin ang anumang deadline na itinakda. Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, please understand. Expedious approval of a new constitution wherein kung meron na pong nakahanda na very particular amendments in every article, at hindi ito masasalang labas sa kapulungan ito, at hayaan lamang ang kapulungan ito ang may responsibilidad o obligasyon na magtalakay at hindi iugnay ito sa kanyang constituent. I understand, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, there were proposals in one of the committee deliberations that I observed. If we go for a constituent assembly, the President will appoint twenty-five expert personalities that has capability, integrity, expertise in various fields. Na kapag tayo po ay binuo bilang conas, meron pong dalawang putlimang katao na maliban sa tinalakay ng Kongreso, ng Kumite, o ng Subkumite, meron din tayong pakikinggan na mga opinyon ng ibang mga tinatawag nating resource person. Hindi po ba naging bahagiyan sa pagtalakay ng Kumite, Madam Speaker, na magkakaroon labas sa mga membro ng Kongreso at Senado, meron iaappoint si Pangulong Duterte na magiging batayan at magpanukala din ng kanilang mga opinyon o mga proposal at magiging kabahagi ng pagdedebatehan ng Kongreso? Is it not part of the proposal, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor?
Uh, ang atin pong, uh, period parliamentary status nitong ating, uh, panukala, which is House Concurrent Resolution Number Nine, is, uh, that we are, uh, just, uh, proposing to adopt the, uh, the constituent assembly mode of amending. It's only, it's only, uh, the first step ah. We are not still in the, uh, uh, constituent assembly proper where your honors and, uh, Madam Speaker, uh, concerns will be properly deliberated.
Yes, but my question basically form part of the concurrent resolution, Madam Speaker, because I ask particularly if we will be convened into a constituent assembly, it is a mode also. While we are only limited to three modes in changing our constitution, but there was and there were proposals, concrete proposals, that to be very transparent. In order for us to be very transparent, not only relying on the opinion, probably the knowledge of each member of Congress to be convened as a constituent assembly, but also there is a twenty-five person appointee. Ang, ang, ang ginawang titulungan noon ay parang conscience committee.
Madam Speaker, wala pa namang 'yung, uh, sinasabing twenty-five, uh, uh, commission, uh, wala pa namang naappointed or wala eh. And, uh, our Congress is, uh, separate from the executive branch. Uh, we should, uh, make our work limited within the, uh, uh, powers and prerogatives of the Legislative, uh, Department.
Yes, totoo po 'yan, Madam Speaker. But dahil nga po tayo ay nagtatalakay ngayon ng moda, the mode of changing our constitution, hindi po ba naging konserasyon 'yun ng Kumite na labas o maliban sa mga membro ng Kongreso ay ang panukalang kabahagi ng concurrent House Resolution Number Nine na ito ay magkaroon din ng iba pang mga tao o personalidad nauupo bilang isang... 'yun nga, ang terminong tawag dati ay conscience committee na maglalahad din ang kanilang expert opinion. Siguro sa pamamaraan, and if the... my question would be fitting doon sa pagiging pagkonven na natin, dahil posible... malaki ang posibilidad sa ating pagtatalakay to conven us, we can collectively vote and agree that aside from us, there is another source of opinion, expert opinion at that na magiging bahagi ng ating official deliberation.
Well, uh, Madam Speaker, my dear colleague, it is the, uh, procedure when, uh, our Congress deliberates, uh, bills and resolutions to always invite experts as our guests and reference persons in order to give us the, uh, uh, ideas which can help us make, uh, better or good laws. So, when we conven as a constituent assembly, definitely all, uh, sectors of our society, the experts especially, or perhaps this, uh, commission, we can, uh, invite them and provide us with, uh, better, uh, uh, understanding of, uh, uh, the, uh, the workings and, uh, the, uh, principles in which we can, uh, support and, uh, uh, place in our proposed constitution. All of them will be invited and included. This will be a transparent, honest, and, uh, uh, open discussion. There will, we have rules on this. We have rules for the constituent assembly proper, and there are committees that will be created. And, uh, all of this, in the, in the meantime, all our guest resource persons will be invited to provide, uh, good recommendations and, uh, aspects that can help us prepare and, uh, make, uh, the best constitution that we can have.
Does it mean, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor? Uh, thi... this is a hypothetical question. 'Yun po bang natalakay sa mga subcommittee? The recommendations of the subcommittee will form part not only as a record to be the basis of our deliberation once we are convened as a constituent assembly?
Uh, the, uh, output of our subcommittees and our Committee on Constitutional Amendments are only draft and temporary. If ever it can serve, it will be, it will serve as a guide in order that we can, uh, uh, give priority to, uh, the provisions and articles that needs to be given more time and attention and intelligent deliberation. So, all of these are not final yet. Welcome those people who wants to submit recommendations and proposals. But the finality of this will be when the constituent assembly will approve our constitution. And after that, it will be submitted to our people in a referendum and plebiscite. And that's the final, uh, uh, decision. The people's voice is the final decision.
Ang, ang hindi po malinaw sa akin at malamang, and hindi rin malinaw sa karamihan natin, Madam Speaker, while the rules will be crafted upon adopting the resolution, but is it not uh, proper to state at the moment that once we are convened, will the two houses vote separately or jointly?
I want to be specific on this, that, uh, we must not make interpretations when the law is very clear. That is the, uh, the, uh, process of, uh, uh, legal interpretations, no? When it is very clear, you should not attempt to make other interpretations. It is very clear, and we are limited to this, and we have to support this, that under Article Seventeen on Amendments or Revision, Section One, any amendment to or revision of this constitution may be proposed by, number one, the Congress upon a vote of three-fourths of all its members. Any layman can understand. Very simple, the Congress, comma, upon a vote of three-fourths of all its members. Is there any other interpretation aside from that? The Congress, the Congress constitutes the House of Representatives and the Senate of the Republic of the Philippines. And upon a vote of three-fourths of all its members, amendments or revision can be done.
Well, Madam Speaker, I will not belabor my colleague and the distinguished sponsor of this because it, it falls and probably it will fall on a constitutional question or it's a more illegal question interpreting the laws. Of course, it's a sole jurisdiction of Congress, of Senate, of the Supreme Court, whether or not we have similar interpretation of the express provision of the constitution. But again, if ever, as, as I understand the very position of the Chairperson and the distinguished sponsor, that any proposed amendment that we will be deliberating after a result of consulting expert opinions, resource persons, then in approving such proposed amendment, for example, an amendment of Article One, Article Two, or Article Three, then all members, the lower house and the Senate, in accordance to his interpretation, to the interpretation of my distinguished sponsor, is we will be voting jointly. Although the Senate, our counterpart, is still on the process also of probably seeking clarification with regards to that manner of voting in the event that a proposed amendment is already on the table and ready for voting. Now, again, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, this may be the question which the framers of the nineteen eighty-seven Constitution missed out. That in the event that both houses will be voting jointly, talaga pong insignificant ang number ng Senado. We have, I, I don't know if I am correct, we, we have two-hundred-ninety-four members of the lower house and we have twenty-two members of Senate. Kahit na po gaano nila talakayin ang mga posibleng amyenda ng konstitusyon sa kanilang bahay at ano man ang pagtatalakay natin sa ating bahay, sa ating kapulungan, pero kapag naghapag na po ng mga proposed amendments, ay talaga pong mababaliwala ang magiging sentimento, collective sentiment ng Senado dahil we, they will be overwhelmed by the sheer number of Congress, two-thirds of two-hundred-ninety-four.
Madam Speaker, point of order.
Ang masasabi ko lang, Madam Speaker, is that, uh...
Madam Speaker, point of order.
It is, uh, best that, uh, we will not speculate.
Of order?
Napakahalaga po ng pinag-uusapan natin na mahalaga na tayo po may courtroom kung pag-uusapan ang charter chains, kanina pa po ako nag-iikot. Ang miyembro po na naririto ay ranging from ninety to one-hundred-two. And we need one-hundred-forty-three members in order to continue transacting business. So may I call, may I move for a roll call? Thank you.
Madam Speaker, we second the ma... the motion of the Honorable Erise for a roll call of the members. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection to the motion? The Chair hears none. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abaya. Abayon. Abiliyanoza.
Abiliyanoza. Abu. Abweg. Acharon. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Ajong. Adbingkula. Agarau. Agabao. Aglipay Bilyar. Albano. Alcala. Alejano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Aquino Magseitsai. Aragonés. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atchenza. Aumentado. Bagau. Bagaching. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Butukabe. Bautista Bandigan. Bilaro. Belmonte Feliciano. Belmonte Jose Cristoper. Belmonte Ricardo. Benitez. Bernos. Bertis. Biazon. Bilyones. Biron. Bulilia. Bondok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Meravida. Brosas. Bulut Piktang. Kagas. Kalalang. Calderón. Kalik Sorbiano. Caminero. Campos. Canama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Casa Franz. Caso Fredenil. Katampo. Cayetano. Celeste. Seraviga. Siriles. Chaves. Chipeco. Co. Cuanco. Culiantes. Cortez. Cortuna. Cosalan. Crisologo. Cuah. Quaresma. Cueva. Delipe. Dazha. Jesus. De Venesia. De Vera. Del Mar. Del Rosario. De Los Montalia. De Moporo Abdullah. De Moporo Khalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Regel. Hermita Boyain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Strelia. Giuseppe. Evardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Feriol. Florendo. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Pentebelia. Garbin. Garcia Guendolin. Garcia Use. Garcia Albano. Geri Richard. Geri Sharon. Casataya. Gachilian. Heron. Guana Cristina. Gomarc. Gomez. Gonzaga. Gonzalez Alexandria. Gonzalez Fernando. Goreseta. Gulyas. Hernandez. Herrera Di. Pofar. Alazoz. Javier. Co. Congun. Labat Labat. Laxson. Lagman. Lanete. Logan. Lasitin. Lia Chon. Li. Limcaichong. Lubrigat. Lopez Benur. Lopez Carlo. Lopez Manuel. Loyola. Magaloroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Magudatus Warto. Marcoleta. Marcos. Marino. Marinho. Marquez. Martinez. Matugas. Milliana. Mending. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Noel. Nugralis Jerico. Nugralis Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Malinhaon. Wominal. Ocampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Pacquiao. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panganiban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Beneda. Plaza. Primicia Segabas. Kimbo. Radaza. Ramiresato. Ramos. Relampagos. Ribeña. Rova Puno. Robes. Rocomora. Rodriguez Isidro. Rodriguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roque. Saktalan. Sagarbaria. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangan. Salo. Salon. Sambar. Sangkopan. Sandoval. Santos Rehto. Sarmiento Cesar. Sarmiento Edgar. Sabiliano. Semah. Xiau. Silverio. Singson. Suansing Estralita. Suansing Raso. Suarez. Si Albarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Shuni. Tejada. Teves. Chanko. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupas. Ti. Umani. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Barreta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Bilarte. Bilasco. Bilasco Catera. Beloso. Vergara. Villaperte. Villanueva. Villarasa Suarez. Villarica. Villarín. Villago. Yap Arthur. Yap Melicio. Yap Victor. You. Somor Marcamen. Somor Ronaldo. Sarate Subiri.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 186 members responded to the call.
With 186 members responding to the call, the Chair hereby declares the presence of a corum. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider once more House Concurrent Resolution Number 9. Could the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the resolution?
Session is adjourned till tomorrow, Wednesday at 4 o'clock in the afternoon.